... meeting for the city of Utica Tuesday, December ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief Willsec, will you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Deputy Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Torenzi.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Deion.
Here.
Backus.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Devrent.
Here.
Mayor Calendrino.
Here.
All present, and we obviously have a quorum. Tonight, we have a couple of special things we're conducting. First, I'm going to hand things off to Chief Kaluzny.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. This is one of those special moments here in police officers' career that, you know, it's really memorable, and I'm excited to have everybody here. Before we start, I want to take a quick second and thank retired Chief Sean Cody. Thank you. Retired Sergeant Jerry Carroll. Retired dispatcher Donna Anderson. And our quasi-part-time retired dispatcher Rick Van Syes. It really is a special moment, and I'm glad to see not only our retirees come out, but all the officers and all the friends here for Josh. Thank you all for being here tonight as we recognize and celebrate, like I said, one of the most significant milestones in a police officer's career. Today, we're going to promote Josh Erdl to the position of Lieutenant. Moments like this allow us to pause and reflect on the dedication, sacrifice, and leadership that makes this department that much stronger. Promotion of Lieutenant is extra special here for the city of Utica. This has been well over twenty years that we've had somebody hold that title within the department, and I'm honored to have Josh be the next Lieutenant here. Josh began his law enforcement career attending at Ferris State University, retaining a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, along with attending the police academy. Upon graduation, and Josh will attest to this, trying to find a job back in the day was not an easy task, definitely nothing like it is today. Josh began his career, then, as a dispatcher here in our department. After showing dedication to the department and through probably a couple empty promises, Josh was promoted to the position of Officer here at the department. Throughout my career, I had the opportunity to work with Josh and seen him excel in each and every role that he's taken on. Currently, he runs our evidence room, he's a evidence technician, SFSD instructor, and handles all the scheduling, payroll, on top of supervising all three of our patrol shifts. Josh embodies the values we expect from our leaders: integrity, professionalism, accountability, and a general commitment to serving our community. As evident by everybody that's here from our department, Josh is well-respected amongst the officers, dispatchers, and is easily one of those people that you can go talk to if you have any type of problem. He's just that type of person. He'll sit down and talk to anybody at any time. What has always stood out is the way that Josh approaches challenges. He's very calm in his decision-making, makes sound judgment, and has a willingness to shoulder responsibility when it matters most. The role of Lieutenant is not just a new rank, it's a new level of leadership for Josh. It requires ability to continue to guide the officers through complex situations, make difficult decisions, and set the standards that every member of this department will follow. I have every confidence that Josh will excel in this role and continue to progress this department forward. I look forward to continuing to develop him in his rank and that one day, he too can lead this department and push it forward into the future. Josh is joined here with his wife Wendy, his three children Jaclyn, Olivia, and Alexander. Josh, on behalf of the entire department and the city of Utica, I welcome you to the rank of Lieutenant.
You know, when my kids were little, and we would take them to visit Santa, inevitably, they would laugh and goof off, and my wife would get really mad. And I would tell her, "Don't get mad, because when we're old and we look back at these videos and pictures, we'll get a good laugh," because, you know, the kids were being kids. And it's not just every year, kids sitting on Santa's lap and smiling. Well, now, twenty years from now, whenever, if you ever watch this video, you can laugh at me, because I have Bell's palsy, and my speech is a little muddled. I wish I was 100% for you tonight, but I'm not, but I will do my best. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
The Charter for the city of Utica.
The Charter for the city of Utica.
The rules and regulations.
The rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures.
Policies and procedures.
And the general orders.
And the general orders.
Of the Utica Police Department.
Of the Utica Police Department.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of Police Lieutenant.
Of Police Lieutenant.
For the city of Utica.
For the city of Utica.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Someone.
It's very sharp, so be careful.
Perfect.
We're lucky to have you.
There's always one. Can't take these retired guys out of here.
I want to thank everyone for coming and sharing this important day with Lieutenant Erdl. I'm going to have to get used to that now. I'm so used to calling you Sergeant. But we're so thankful that you all came and took some time out of your week to celebrate this momentous occasion with our police department and with Lieutenant Erdl, so thank you. You're all welcome to stick around and see how the sausage is made. It's not that exciting, but like I said, you're all welcome to stick around. At this time, we open up the floor for public comments for any items listed on the agenda. Everyone will be allotted three minutes to speak. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address council? Josh. And I'll just wait a minute to give everyone that's leaving an opportunity to exit. All right, as there's no one that would like to speak to council, we'll move on with the agenda. First up is consent business. I would be looking for a motion to approve all items in consent.
So moved.
Motion by Deion.
Support.
Support by Weaver. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Backus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We have no unfinished business or correspondence under new business. Our first item is the Plant Moran City Services. As council members are aware, last month, we voted to engage the services of Plant Moran to look at the feasibility of relocating city of Utica facilities and provide to the city council a report on their findings. This study was not anticipated in the city of Utica's fiscal year 2026 budget. Therefore, requiring an amendment to the general fund budget increasing by $18,000, the GL Account 101-261-810001 Consultants/Special Projects. So I would be looking for a motion to amend the fiscal year 2026 general fund budget by increasing by $18,000 Account 101-261-810001 Consultants/Special Projects.
So moved.
Motion by Deion.
Support.
Support by Weaver. Any discussion?
Yes, I do. I'm sorry. I was moving my thing. I will be voting no on this, and the reason is, is that I was not here last month, and I feel that this should have been weighted to be in the budget, because at the end of our, when we finished our budget, we had $61,912 of unassigned monies. Woo-hoo! That was, like, for us, that's a lot of money. And we, last month, we used $10,000 that had to go to the audit, and that was a necessity. So we had to take out of that $61,000, we're already down to $51,000, and to use another 18 that's not in budget, I feel we should have waited for the budget. I'm in favor of the, of Plant Moran coming and doing the study. I feel that it's a great thing for our city. I just don't feel that this is the right time, so I will be voting no.
Mr. Abbot.
I have a question, sir. What's the, maybe Phil might know, but what's the actual amount of the balance, the unassigned fund balance?
I don't have that number, Phil.
Is it in the millions?
Unassigned, no.
Is it?
Well, we have a capital improvement fund where we automatically remove, at a certain point, we remove unassigned fund balance and put it into that capital improvement fund, so I don't know what those balances are off the top of my head.
Very good, thanks.
For anyone that watched last week, last month's meeting, you may recall that I was the lone no vote on this for similar reasons, as Mayor Protem Torenzi mentioned. I'm all for it. I realize if we want to move the city forward, especially our downtown area, there's things that we have to do. Personally, I thought that it was more prudent to wait and budget it for the next fiscal year. It would also give us the opportunity to have more in-depth discussions among council members and also to get more feedback from the public about how we spend their tax dollars. I was the only no vote at that time, so I have reset the button. I am now on board with anything we do moving forward. We have signed the contract, as I was directed to based on last month's vote, so it'd be very difficult at this point to not pay Plant Moran, as we've already signed the contract and engaged them for their services. So I'll be voting yes, but that's just a little backstory on how this thing has progressed. So last month, we voted to engage Plant Moran for this review of our downtown. This month, all we're really doing is amending the budget to pay for what we voted to do last month. So is there any other discussion from council?
And Mayor, you had mentioned that we had done a study, or a study had been done in 2019, maybe around that date?
Yeah, I think it was 2018 or 19.
What stopped that from moving forward? Budget? It was right during COVID.
That's the ACR.
It's when we dissolved the DDA. That was what stopped the funding for that project.
Yeah. It was millions of dollars. It was really to, that study, which went nowhere at the time, was to change the whole road configuration of Auburn Road, make it a one-way traffic. There were two, there was two options to make the traffic go east, and the other option was to make it go west. They were bringing out the sidewalks in, removing a lane of traffic, and adding angled parking all along Auburn, if I recall. We just didn't have the resources to move forward with that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Torenzi.
No.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Backus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda is revisions to Section 62-77A regarding snow, ice, and rubbish removal. In your last month, this item was postponed due to some concerns about the periods of time that were allowed for residents and businesses to remove snow and ice after a snow event. I don't have the old version in front of me, but if I recall, it was, if it snowed, you know, in the early morning, you only had until noon, I believe, which would have made it very difficult for working people to get out and shovel their snow. And then there was a similar parameter for if it snowed in the afternoon or evening, you had until the next day or next afternoon. It was confusing. It was going to be kind of a burden for our residents, especially our working residents, and it was recommended that we change that to allow a 24-hour period from any snow event. That updated language is in your packet, and I would be looking for a motion to approve the amended ordinance regarding snow, ice, and rubbish as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Backus, support by Mayor Protem Torenzi. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Backus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda is Department Reports. I will kick things off. I'd like to let all residents know that this is the last week for yard waste or compost pickup, so Thursday would be your last opportunity to put those leaves and branches out on the curb. It won't start up again until I think it's April, so I know it's a little weird with an inch or so of snow on the ground to be thinking about leaves and yard waste, but Thursday's our last chance, so just wanted to make everybody aware. I also want to remind everyone that Saturday evening is our annual Christmas tree lighting celebration with fireworks. It's going to be a great event. This year, we have the Utica High School marching band coming out and performing Christmas songs. We also have the incredible Vanessa Carr coming out and singing some songs for us, and she'll be performing with the Dance Class Dance Studio from Shelby Township. You can meet Jack Skellington. You get to hear how our fire department has, how they did on their Toys for Tots program. So it's going to be, oh, we also have a commercial-grade fireworks show, so it's going to be a great night. Seven o'clock, Memorial Park. I hope everyone can attend. The last thing I'd like to do, sadly, is honor Chief Kevin Willsec on his retirement. He will be retiring on January 4th. He's been a complete asset for the city of Utica. He's led with honor and dignity. He's really moved the Utica Fire Department forward. His knack for finding equipment and supplies cheap is going to be missed. We're going to have to find somebody that wears those cheap shoes that you seem to be wearing, Chief, so you've done a great job, and you will be sorely missed. I would like to read to you a resolution. Whereas Fire Chief Willsec has faithfully and honorably served the city of Utica and the Utica Fire Department for seventeen years, demonstrating unwavering dedication, professionalism, and courage. And whereas, throughout his distinguished career of over forty years, Chief Willsec has embodied the highest standards of public service, providing steadfast leadership, promoting safety, and ensuring the protection of residents, visitors, and businesses with our, within our community. And whereas, Chief Willsec has led by example, mentoring countless firefighters, advancing department training and preparedness, and fostering a culture of integrity, teamwork, and compassion. And whereas, his commitment to excellence has not only strengthened the operational readiness of the Utica Fire Department, but has left a lasting influence on all who have served under his command. And whereas, upon his retirement, we express our deepest gratitude for his service, his leadership in times of crisis, and his unwavering commitment to the safety and well-being of our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Gus Calendrino, mayor of the city of Utica, do hereby commend and congratulate Fire Chief Kevin Willsec on the occasion of his retirement and extend the heartfelt appreciation of an entire community for a career marked by honor, bravery, and exceptional service. Be it further resolved that this resolution be presented to Chief Willsec as a symbol of the city's highest respect and gratitude. In witness thereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of Utica to be affixed this ninth of December, 2025. Thank you, Chief Willsec. And I do believe we have some other special guests here that would also like to honor you tonight.
Yeah, like, first of all, I'd like to thank your family. My grandpa, Deion. My wife, for forty years. Been gone a lot of Halloween, and known myself. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Chris. Thank you. We'd like to thank your family for sharing you with us for all these years.
County Commissioner Sylvia Grof. Welcome tonight.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. I want to thank Kevin Willsec for the service to the community. A lot of people probably don't know, but he worked for Shelby Township, that was way before me. He retired from Shelby Township, and he moved two days later, took the position of the chief in Utica. So on behalf of the county board commissioners, this is official proclamation for the police field. I want to present him with, and thank him for his service and dedication to the community. So, thank you very much.
Okay, we have another special guest, Mr. Phil Rowe from Congressman John James's office.
Yes, John apologizes always for not being able to attend, but he's a busy man, and but his police and fire and first responders are very high on his list of priorities as a congressman. So we'd like to give a special tribute to you, Fire Chief Kevin Wiznick, Willsec. Whereas, Fire Chief Kevin Willsec has devoted forty years to the noble calling of public safety, demonstrating exceptional professionalism, leadership, and service to the residents of Shelby Township and the city of Utica. And whereas, Chief Willsec began his distinguished career January 4th, 1983, as firefighter EMT with Shelby Township Fire Department, quickly earning the respect of his colleagues and community members through his dedication, integrity, and steadfast commitment to protecting life property. And whereas, throughout his tenure as Shelby Township, he rose to the ranks with distinction in becoming a firefighter paramedic in 1993, a sergeant in 1995, a truck officer in 1996, a lieutenant in 2001, and ultimately, the battalion chief in 2002. And whereas, after nearly twenty-six years of exemplary service to Shelby Township, Chief Willsec briefly retired, didn't take long, September 14th, 2008, only to return two days later to continue serving in public, accepting the appointment as Fire Chief of the city of Utica, September 15th, 2008, serving nearly seventeen years. And whereas, his official retirement, January 2026, marks the accumulation of a remarkable career defined by integrity, sacrifice, and lifelong commitment to public safety. Now therefore, I recognize Fire Chief Kevin Willsec for his outstanding service, leadership, and enduring contribution to the communities, his family, and his faithfully protected. John James, Member of Congress, Michigan State District. Thank you, Chief, for your service.
And finally, we have a representative from state, Representative Ron Robinson's office.
Oh, Ron. Chief, I want to apologize on behalf of State Representative Ron Robinson. He would have liked to be here, but he's tied up with matters in Lansing and, you know, how he gets sometimes over there. But I have a tribute for you, but I'm going to keep it brief in a few words. I want to, we want to honor you, Chief, for more than forty years of service to not only the city of Utica, but also the Shelby Township and Macomb County as a whole. The duty and responsibility that you held cannot truly be measured in words for everything that you sacrificed, holidays with time with your family, but we hope this tribute comes even a bit close to that. We thank you for our lifetime of service, and we wish you the best in retirement, and a lot of golf, too, if that is your forte, so thank you, Chief.
As you can tell, Chief Willsec has just been an incredible asset to the city of Utica. We appreciate everything you've done for us, Chief. We hope you don't become a stranger. We hope you come and visit us from time to time and let us know how retirement's going or just to say hi. Thanks again. We appreciate you. Well, Chief Willsec's retirement is leaving a big hole in our city, so hopefully, we found a candidate to fill that hole, or at least train, begin his training to fill that hole. Mayor Protem Torenzi, myself, and Chief Willsec conducted interviews with candidates, and it's no surprise that Assistant Chief Randy Plant came out at the top of the heap. So I would be looking for a motion to appoint Randy Plant as Utica Fire Chief as of January 5th, 2026, subject to legal review of his contract that is being developed as we speak. So moved. Motion by O'Donnell. Support by Torenzi. Any discussion from council? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Backus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor Council, for placing your trust in me. I look forward to the challenge. I'll speak more next month, but I did want to say at this time, Kevin, you had a heck of a three-to-five-year run there, buddy. I really do value you as a chief, as a mentor, and as a friend. So eighteen years ago, I sat in that chair as you came in. I think you were on shift even at that point. You came in with a similar announcement that you were going to be the chief, and I shook your hand, so I'm going to walk over and shake your hand again, sir, at your last council meeting.
Well, we've had some pretty important things happen already. It seems a little anticlimactic that we're going to move on with the agenda, but move on we must. Tonight, we, or does anybody on council have any reports tonight? Anybody?
We'll miss you all.
Good night, everyone.
Merry holidays, everyone.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Josh, you buying drinks afterward, someone said? Someone said, "Open bar on your tab?"
Thank you, Phil. Sure you do. You too, buddy. Thank you.
See you.
Thank you so much.
Two members of, three members of public left.
Two members of, three members of public left.
Well, you know, you'll never know unless, you know.
This is going to be a record.
He re-watches this, the VOD on YouTube.
Well, I guess they all weren't here to see us.
Feelings are hurt.
All right, moving on, we have nothing from planning, assessing, or building tonight. Ms. Francis, report from library.
Hi, good evening. So in your packet, one of the first things on the agenda for the library is our very informal request from council to, for the library to begin its preparations for a millage renewal to appear on the August 2026 ballot.
So Ms. Francis is looking for a motion to approve the library's request to begin the process of seeking a renewal of its millage to be placed on the August 2026 ballot.
So moved.
Support. Motion by Deion, support by O'Donnell. Any discussion?
We'll get the actual language, you know, either in a month or two, right? This is just to say, sure, go ahead and start thinking about it.
Yeah, we're doing it just a little earlier than last time in hopes that if, you know, we can not have to worry about cutting it too close and getting the wording right, and Linda's going to help us with that, so.
I made some phone calls.
Good, thank you.
Are you going to put it like in the source and different things? We don't even have the source. It's called CNG now. Tells you where I'm at, but.
Maybe an advisor.
To get it out there so that people are seeing it, so we don't have to knock on quite as many doors as we did last time.
We have to be careful because the city cannot actually promote the millage, vote for millage. So, you know, people within the city or on the council are wanting to set up a separate pack or something of that nature.
Okay, I'll knock on doors again.
I mean, you were, were you part of the Friends group the last time that did it?
You know, I wasn't, but I felt so strongly about the library. I was on council, so I just went and picked up something and knocked on doors in a neighborhood and the Flickin' Jurs subsumed for a day.
Any further discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Backus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. And your next item?
Thank you. Next item is the Library Board Christie, Kristi Geruder. Her term expires at the end of this year. She's looking to be reappointed for another five-year term, so requesting that council approve that.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Torenzi, support by O'Donnell. Any discussion?
She's great.
She is.
I serve on the board with her. Very smart.
Excellent.
Yeah. What else can you ask for? Nothing.
A vote, maybe.
Yeah, exactly.
Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Backus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Tell Ms. Geruder, congratulations from all of us. Anything else to report tonight? Maybe something about the bake sale?
Yes, next Saturday, or this Saturday, is our library bake sale in conjunction with the Christmas tree lighting. We, some might say it's the best part of the Christmas tree lighting, but I don't know.
Better than Santa?
Well, the Santa, maybe. But we actually still need bakers. It's not too late. If you want to bake, drop off any of your goodies on Friday or Saturday, preferably before the bake sale starts at 5:00. We'll be there maybe till 9:00 or hopefully when the goodies run out. So, but hopefully we see everybody there. We also have children's, well, Christmas children programs that start at 5:30. So if people get there early, they'll get in a good spot before the Christmas tree lighting starts.
I have my baked goods all packaged.
Thank you.
And the freezer.
And the bake sale starts at 5:00?
Yes, it does.
Perfect. Anything else to report tonight?
That is it.
Thank you so much. Chief Wilsec, your final report.
I'm not spending any money.
We're not finding any money.
Again, thank you.
Thank you.
We thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Willsec.
I will miss you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to just, as everybody else has said, take a quick second and congratulate Kevin on his, you know, dedicated years to the community and to the city of Utica. So you're definitely going to need this, so thank you. I have one agenda item summary for you guys. I received a citizen's complaint or not really complaint, an issue looking at traffic control. And the issue that was brought up is the intersection of Cass and McClellan, and they were looking for cross-traffic-do-s not-stop signs. So if you're familiar, if you go back a street over to Cass and Summers, we had two signs put up. So the request was the citizens would like to have signs put at Cass and McClellan. Prior to just putting signs up, I'd like to do a traffic study and really look to see, is this beneficial or are we just adding multiple signs? So I looked at crash data, I looked at speed data down Cass, and also looked at, you know, how did the intersection of Cass and Summers with the new signs get put on? How did it, did it have a positive impact? And looking through all the data, and I included my traffic study in there for your review, it's of my opinion that adding those signs will have a positive benefit because almost 80, I believe it's about 80% of the crashes at that intersection are angle-type intersect, or angle-type crashes. So they're coming from McClellan, crossing over, and getting hit on Cass. So I'd be requesting a motion to approve Traffic Control Order 25-02, as presented by myself, and that's authorizing the installation of cross-traffic-do-s not-stop signs on stop-controlled approaches at the intersection of Cass and McClellan.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Torenzi, support by Weaver. Any discussion?
Just thank, Chief, thanks for doing that because I, it was a complaint that was brought to me that I brought to you in the mirror. It's crazy to think that there's 45,000 cars that go up and down Cass in a 13-day period. You don't, you don't think about it. You see a couple of cars as you're looking out the window. You don't put the numbers 45,000 cars together. But great work, I mean, extensive work. I had no clue that that was that involved, and it's just great that we have those resources that you took the time to do it. Even though it seemed like maybe a minor complaint, you took it and you made it like it was way, obviously, we didn't understand the work that had to go into in order to do this, but certainly appreciate how much effort you put into it. And you killed it. So I mean, like, the data they have here, people that want to make complaints, they have nothing but to say that this, they've done their job and they've done it so well. So thanks for taking it serious and making it look so amazing.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any further discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Backus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Anything else to report tonight, Chief? That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Superintendent Diamond.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and I'd like to jump on that board and say congratulations on Chief Wilsec for your countless years in the fire service. Obviously, I respect that position in any department, so it does, it's truly a blessing to be able to get out of here in one piece and spend some time with Mrs. Wilsec, so congrats. I have four on the agenda this evening. The first one is an update for our replacement services for Lingo telephone lines. After the first initial site assessment, they found that they weren't going to be able to do one unit at Grant Park and will need two. So it will be a reflection of a revised total from $273.75 a month to $289.75 a month, which is an extra $16 for the, for the unit. It's still a cost savings for the city, and because we need to get the extra unit, the upfront cost is $20 for the modem and delivery, and then the $650 for that site to finish the survey and the professional installation. And I will say that Lingo has been very kind to be able to, they gave us a credit for the, until replacements get made, we were hoping that this was going to be done for November's bill and then December's bill, so we had to pay, you know, the higher costs were still there, is why we were looking for this replacement. And they did say that they would give us a credit of $294 per month, so we're at that, at the price that we would be or close to it moving forward. So I thought that was nice of them because they realized there are error after, after the site survey, so, excuse me. So I'm looking for a motion from city council to approve the updated changes to the new three-year contract with Lingo for phone services in Grant Park and Davis, Sterrett, and Utica lift stations, replacing the POTS lines with LTE, pay-through water, water and sewer, and parks telephone, telephones, GLs 592-536-853000 and 101-751-853000.
So moved. Support. Motion by O'Donnell, support by Deion. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Backus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. The next one on the agenda is our Neptune 360 annual fee, which is our city's meter reading software for our water meters. This was in the budget, we did budget for this, so there's no amendment required. So I'm looking for a motion from city council to approve payment of Ferguson Water Works invoice 0233442 for our Neptune 360 annual fee in the amount not to exceed $4,380 from Water and Sewer Department Software Support, 592-536-731010.
So moved. Motion by Backus.
Support.
Support by Torenzi. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Backus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. The next one is for the MDOT Local Agency Safety Grant that we received for design proposal. HRC's proposal for professional engineering services to design the Auburn Road and Cass Avenue non-motorized corridor improvements is estimated not to exceed $51,000 for the project, $22,000 of which would be associated with this fiscal year. So I need two motions for this, and this would be a budget coming from the, just moving from the grant money, not from our general budget. So a motion from city council to approve HRC's design proposal in the amount not to exceed $51,000.
So moved.
Motion by Torenzi.
Support.
Support by Backus. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Backus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. The last one is a fiscal year general fund, street department budget, engineering budget amendment. This is requesting an amendment to fiscal year 26 general fund, street department engine budget for the MDOT safety grant application from funds that were not spent last year from the general fund's unassigned fund balance. A motion from, so I will need a motion from city council to amend fiscal year 26 general fund, street department, but, uh, street department engineering budget account 101-441-82100027 FLSP in the amount of $4,110 from the general fund's unassigned fund balance.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Torenzi, support by Devrent. Any discussion from council? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Backus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. I just have a few things. Obviously, we are in snow and salt season, so the guys have been out a couple times for overtime and during the day. Everything's been going smooth. We've been knocking it out as, as normal. I have 300 tons of salt that's on its way for delivery to fill back up our salt dome. And also just a reminder about the tree lighting on Saturday. Thank you to Chief and Mrs. Wilsec for the donating of the tree. We went and cut that down the other day and go exactly as planned, but we still got it out of there. Nobody injured, and it's up. We're in the, in the process of decorating it, and we will push it into the place and have everything ready for Saturday.
It's a beauty, though, Chief.
It's, yeah, it is a gorgeous tree. And since this is the last council meeting before the holidays, I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to you and your families. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Diamond. We have nothing from the treasurer tonight. Madam Deputy Clerk, a report from administration, anything to report?
Nope, just happy holidays, and I'm ready for the tree lighting.
Nothing from Parks and Rec or Historic. Ms. McGreal.
Happy holidays to everyone, and congratulations to Chief Wilsec and to now Lieutenant Arnold.
Thank you. All right, at this point in the meeting, we open up the floor for communication from the public. It can be about anything at all. It doesn't have to be an agenda item. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address council? As there is not, I would be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Deion.
Support.
Support by Devrent. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, I didn't goof up once, did I?